She doesn't like me.
Hey. Are you gonna talk about your, uh...
Now they know who to put the camera on.
Food?
Oh, yeah.
Blow it out.
Are those all yours?
We'll begin in thirty seconds.
And good evening. Welcome to my fellow board members. And it's time to call the January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen School Board Meeting to Order. On behalf of my colleagues, I'd like to thank all of you who are in attendance with us in person or watching the meeting from another location for investing your time and energy to join us. We truly appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, and our staff, and our community. While the Board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our very best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and to help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in this process. Pam, roll call, please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich? Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence as we mourn the loss of four of our BPS family members. Gavin Imes, a sixth-grade student from Sherwood Elementary; Jared Santos, a fifth-grade student from West Melbourne School for Science; Donovan Tucker, a ninth-grade student from Melbourne High; and Richard Summers, a Mid-South Transportation Bus Driver. We send our sincere condolences to their family and friends during this difficult time. Thank you all for your time. This evening, Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Blackburn the opportunity to recognize staff, students, or community members. First of all, before we start, I will take the opportunity to recognize and thank Mr. Kevin Thornton and the incredible food team that has brought you all of the great items tonight. Hopefully, you got to sample some of them. Mr. Thornton and his team have worked to put together a great new, fresh menu with some amazing new choices. Those are just a sampling of a few of those. And Kevin, if you wouldn't mind giving us a little background and letting us know what's coming forward, that'd be great.
We would love to, sir. We thank you so much for the opportunity and for us to be able to share this, some of the changes that we're making in our world of food service. We're certainly thankful for the opportunity this evening to showcase our newest healthy entree choices that were launched just this past week. So, this week, we launched three new menu choices in our schools with some great results from the kids and participation, and we're very proud about that with regards to that. I'm asking Lori Conlin, our dietitian specialist, who is, who can provide some additional information about the three choices tonight, for you to be able to have more information about. So Lori?
Good evening. So, I'm very happy to bring these new recipes to you all tonight. Our team worked very diligently to come up with really healthy and appealing options for the students, but they also meet the nutrition guidelines from the National School Lunch Program, which can be challenging. So, we're really happy about the way they came out, and so I'm just gonna tell you a little bit more about each of those ones that we sampled out this evening. We had the warm spinach pre-se. So, that is a herb-seasoned pita pocket, and it's stuffed with fresh spinach leaves, tomatoes, and mozzarella cheese, and it's seasoned with basil and garlic, and it's served warm, so the cheese is melted. Then we also have the Mediterranean stuffed pita, which is also an herb-pita bread, and it's stuffed with romaine lettuce, cucumbers, red peppers, carrots, and it's served with a side of sunflower seeds that are honey-roasted. And then we also have a fresh vegan salad, and it is mixed greens, and it has cranberries, it has red kidney beans, it has red peppers and cherry tomatoes. That's served with that herb-pita bread, and it also has the honey-roasted sunflower seeds along with it, too. So, we do have these out in the schools now, these three options, and we've had a really good response from the students so far. So, I was really happy to hear about that because these are really healthy, fresh options, and it's nice to know that the students are excited about them and they're choosing them. So, hopefully, you all have had a chance to try the samples that we had tonight, and I hope you agree that they're fresh, healthy, they look great, and I think they're gonna be great for the students, a nice, healthy option. We are offering them both as a meal, a school meal, and also they're sold à la carte. The price range is in the two-dollar range, so anywhere between two and two-fifty, depending on the entree. Thank you.
Fantastic.
And we have additional items coming, so we're very pleased with some additional items that we'll be focusing in and on with regards to that. We'll be looking at some additional salads, along with some additional chicken products that we're bringing in that will enhance our offerings to our students. So, we are very thankful to the Board, thankful to Dr. Blackburn, to Dr. Mullins for their support of our food service operation, and we appreciate your interest in it, and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them, or just come on out to the schools and enjoy the fresh, new entrees. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin. And, you know, as the parent of two high school students, I know how hard it is to find healthy options, and you guys are doing awesome. Any other board members? I know Miss Duskovich is one of your passions.
Yes, I had you on my list to acknowledge, but since we, since you showcased here, I don't need to separate you out, but Kevin, I'm just so grateful, and Dr. Mullins, for all of your hard work. I know this has been countless hours. I know you take your nutrition and your job seriously, and you provided not only nutritious food, but it tastes delicious, and I'm just thrilled. Thanks so much.
You're so welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you. Oh, yes, Matt? Do you guys have, like, a meal plan where we can prepay?
You betcha.
And show up at the schools and go? This is amazing.
We would more than happy to take your money. We have a Meal Pay Plus is an online prepayment option for you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Kevin. Back to recognitions. Matt? We'll usually go the other way. We'll start with you this time. All right. So, first off, I see one of my former principals, assistant principals inside the, inside the crowd here, Mr. Waller. I had an opportunity, he was one of the driving forces behind me as a teacher, and I wanted to tell him, one, I apologize for digging those trenches without your permission, having the police show up because I built that Vietnam village in the woods out front a couple times, but I really believe that you were integral in my development as a teacher, and I want to say thank you, and I want to wish you good luck on your next step. So, that was the first one. Okay, so today, I was at the Melbourne Airport and excited because we're putting the finishing touches on what will become Innovation Day, and they gave us an eighty-thousand-square-foot hangar, along with access and bus routes and everything else. So, it looks like March twenty-third is gonna be the day that we put together the Innovation Games, and we're gonna be inside with underwater drones, above-the-water drones, and code craft, and a bunch of other stuff, so that's really exciting. I get daily pictures of the O'Gally Aviation Hangar, and it is progressing. We now have the pipes coming out of the floor, so there's literally, for those of you that don't know, an aviation hangar that's being built at O'Gally High School, where we have aviation techs that are going to work directly into the industry, and that will be slated to finish in April. Really excited there. And Ms. Linda Buffman put together what's known as ECET II, or ESET, which is the most amazing thing that I was a part of, and that was last Friday. It's a collaboration between all your best teachers and administrators on what best practices are with inside of our school system, and it's a baby that she put together along with secondary and everybody else that is just absolutely amazing and was needed, and it's one of the deriving things that we do as a school district that I think is attributed to Dr. Blackburn and the other staff members for putting together something so amazing. And I think we get a lot of good production and a lot of good collaboration out of that day, so I wanted to give her a shout-out. Also, the EDC, I said on the CPT Council, and for the first time, those of you that don't know, we have a Certified Production Technician Program that gets kids jobs inside the community as production technicians, and they go through an eighty-hour course. What was significant about this group that just came through is that half of them are women. So, we have thirty inductees going into this program, and half of them are women, which is phenomenal, to say that we have a new workforce that's coming, and I look forward to seeing them challenge a lot of the other workers. I wanted to say thank you to the Daughters of the American Revolution for allowing me to speak, along with the Federated Republican Women's Caucus, and I also wanted to say thank you to the pre-K teachers that met with me two nights ago to go through all of the situations on how we can collaborate and make that process for their teaching and instruction better, and that's all I got. Fantastic. Thank you. Tina?
I would like to put a special emphasis today on a few schools that have taken...
That turned off.
Yeah, it just cut off. They have, we have, I guess the state has set up a process, a certification process, for schools to become certified in suicide prevention, and I'm proud of our state for taking that step to do that, but we have schools that have worked hard to obtain this certification, and I wanted to give them their due credit tonight because it's not a simple or easy process necessarily. All instructional staff have to take a two-hour suicide prevention course, and then they have to have a faculty meeting where they work together to work through some of the issues and set some guidelines for their schools, and so, so far, we have one school that has stepped forward and completed this process, and that's Madison Middle School, and I think that deserves a good round of applause to Madison Middle School. And I think coming up really soon, hopefully by the next School Board Meeting, we'll have Edgewood, Space Coast, Longleaf, and Sunrise also very close to completing that process, and so, I'm super proud of them. This is an issue that's close to my heart, and I hope that all of our schools will work towards becoming certified so that the teachers will have the skills and the tools that they need to maybe spot where there's some troubled areas. On that same note, I want to give a shout-out to Light Love in Her Arms again. Mr. Jamie Torkowski spoke to the ninth-grade students at Palm Bay Magnet High School on the twelfth, and he always does an amazing job, and he really connects with the students. Students come forward afterwards, and there's some heartbreaking stories that they open up with, and he connects them then with the school counselors, and they end up getting the treatment and the help they need, and so, this is an important initiative. I hope that we'll continue to support. And I just want to give a quick shout-out to Mr. Brian DeGonza, who is the principal at Imagine Charter School. He, I called him up and said I'd like to visit. I like to visit the schools within District Three on a regular basis, but also our charter schools to see how they're doing and maybe get ideas and build that relationship, and so he graciously hosted me for a few hours at his school and gave me a tour, and I'm proud of the hard work they're doing there, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Mrs. Belford?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. First, a thank you to the staff and this Board and Dr. Blackburn, who came together on the fifteenth of December for our Board Superintendent Cabinet Retreat. I think that has been one of the most important things that we have done as a team, to build those relationships and have those conversations about where we need to improve, take ownership of our challenges, and celebrate our successes, and plot our course forward. So, many thanks to all who came together to make that happen. On the twentieth of December, I had the opportunity to attend the Adult Ed Graduation Ceremony at Clear Lake, and for any of my fellow board members, if you have not had the opportunity to attend one of the Adult Ed graduations, I encourage you to do so. It's a small but mighty group, and their stories are all very different, but there's certainly a thread that runs through all of those stories, that they have taken a different path to get where they are for whatever reason, and they have all persevered and overcome and gotten to where they were aiming to get. The only graduation, I believe, in the district where they actually graduate and they receive a coupon, if you will, for a free course at Eastern Florida State College, and as they're crossing the stage, Jeff Arnott says, "So, what's next?" to every one of them, and every single one of them had a "What's next?", whether it was going into service, going on to college, whether they were going into careers, but just such a great opportunity to ensure that those students who maybe don't feel like the traditional high school experience is their path can still achieve that graduation and move on and do great things, and so congratulations to all those graduates, and thank you to Mr. Arnott for having us. We then went on to have our holiday breakfast, and many thanks once again to our food service folks who did an enormous amount of hard work, along with the staff that put in the effort to decorate and make that a wonderful morning for us all to come together. Recently, Ms. Duskovich and I went to, and Dr. Blackburn, Mr. Susan, were you at the Sources of Strength Meeting?
No.
Okay. So, Ms. Duskovich and Dr. Blackburn and I attended a Sources of Strength Meeting in the North End, and for those of you unfamiliar, it's kind of a suicide awareness program, focusing heavily on positives and identifying your sources of strength in life. We have programs in five of the schools in my district, and it has been a phenomenal program for our students to help them identify those sources of strength to get them through the difficult times, to identify peer leaders who can reach out to those students that might be on the cusp of the social circles in high school, and help to incorporate them into the school community, and so that has been phenomenal. We had a great morning with the founder of Sources of Strength, and would like to send a shout-out, obviously, to the team that's been working on Sources of Strength, but also to Parish Medical Center that does an enormous amount for our students. Not only have they been funding our Sources of Strength programs, they're also paying for our students to join us in Tallahassee for legislative days, so they have been wonderful partners, and we want to make sure that we thank them. On the fifteenth, I had the opportunity to attend the MLK Parade in Titusville. Mr. Edwards was there as well, and several others, and that was always, is always a great event. Most of our schools were represented at the parade. Good time to come together and celebrate and work on unity and focusing on everyone moving forward, so I appreciate that opportunity. Also got to go and read to Imperial Estates this week, which was always fun during Celebrate Literacy Week to get out and get in the classroom and read some books to some kids, and I don't know about you guys, but they always blow my mind, just the things that they come up with. The first book I read was a super silly book called The Book with No Pictures, and we had fun with that, and somehow that parlayed into how they can set goals and do, if they know what they want to do with their life and they focus, and as I'm asking them these questions, the teachers have already been going through goal-setting with them, and they've already, they really had it on target, so sharp group of kids, and thanks to Imperial for letting me come. I'm almost done, I promise. Yesterday, Mr. Susan and I had the opportunity to join our Space Coast Junior/Senior High School team for an introduction of what they are calling Launch Institute, which is gonna be a phenomenal program offered at Space Coast Junior/Senior High School, partnering with industry, providing certifications, internships, and really targeting those students that maybe not know their potential, but helping them to get into that mindset and see what they truly can do. So, thank you to the Space Coast team for all that you all have been doing to make that come about. That was kind of a part of our project launch that we've been talking about and looking at potentially down the road getting a legislative request for, but Space Coast took the initiative, and they are moving forward and putting things into place, so great job, Space Coast. And then lastly, this morning, I had the opportunity to meet with our Youth Mental Health Task Force, along with several of our staff members. Dr. Thady and several of her team members were there as well. That is a phenomenal group of people that have come together to really look at our suicide issue, and it's not an issue just for Brevard, it's a nationwide issue, but we certainly are seeing enough challenges here in Brevard with that issue, and so it is people from just about every organization that you can think of that would have any reason to interact on the issue of youth suicide, coming together to develop solutions, and so I'm honored to be able to be a part of that task force. We have a walk coming up in March, which will be getting information out about the task force is putting together the walk, and a carnival as well, and really doing a big media push to help people understand suicide risk and to provide resources to those in our community that may need them. So, if you have the opportunity to get involved with that organization, it would be a great thing to do, and that is all I have.
Thank you, Misty, and Mr. Ziegler?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. First off, I'd like to thank the Orlando-Melbourne Regional Airport. You gotta get that Orlando-Melbourne right, or it's a big issue. Through my relationships with them for over a year, I've been working on trying to get an aircraft for our aviation program at O'Gally, and they've been working real hard to find one, and I also, they found one, and I'd also like to thank our instructor, Bill McKinnis, at O'Gally for going out and looking at it to find out if it would be fit for his program. Unfortunately, based on the type of plane it was, he felt it wasn't a good fit for his program, so we'll stay on Orlando-Melbourne Regional Airport to see if they can find something else, but I'm very appreciative of them offering to help us in that manner. That's really a big deal, so we'll stay on top of that. Also, like to recognize and congratulate our principal at West Shore, Mr. Rick Fleming, for being a finalist, I think one of three finalists, as the state of Florida for Principal of the Year for the state, and I don't know, Dr. Blackburn, do you know when that final decision is gonna come down?
I think it's February nine, February ninth, yes, in Orlando.
Okay, so we need to, we need to put a fix in for our principal there, if that's at all possible, because he absolutely deserves it, but then again, most of our principals deserve it. We've had a lot of great principals, so congratulations to Mr. Rick Fleming for being a finalist. And last, since we have him in the audience, I'd like to recognize Art Edward for his dedication to Brevard Public Schools, for serving for over ten years on our audit committee. Thank you very much, Art.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Dr. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. First, I want to just welcome everyone back officially from the winter break and the holiday season. Happy New Year to everyone, but just before the winter break, several of us were treated to a visit down at Bayside High School, where we got a chance to witness a public-private partnership where students with disabilities worked alongside their non-disabled peers and community partners in order to build a tiny house, and the entire project happened in collaboration with the students with disabilities and non-disabled peers, or teachers, administrators, and partners, from design to construction, and everything, just a phenomenal event. Then, right after the winter break, Mrs. Belford and I got a chance to join Mrs. Klein and Ms. Jennifer Brockwell over at South Lake Elementary School. We all know that South Lake is being reopened next year, but before we can open it, there's just some demolition, construction, renovation that has to take place, so we got a chance to put on the hard hats and swing sledgehammers, and we had a good time. They had to stop us, though, because I think it was Ms. Belford hit a beam too hard, and so we just had to stop that and get out of there, but thank you for that opportunity and everyone. Mr. Theodore, Mrs. Klein, all of your staff, Ms. Brockwell, your staff, all the work that you're putting into getting that school up and running for August. Want to say congratulations to Ms. Jill Minus. Did I say that right, Dr. Thady? Jill Minus, resource teacher for students with emotional and behavioral disabilities, has won, she's won the Southeast Region Council for Children with Behavioral Disabilities Teacher of the Year Award, so give Ms. Minus a round of applause. She'll actually be honored at the Council for Exceptional Children in February. On January nineteenth, there was an Infinite Scholars Event coordinated and led by a community member, leader, staff member at Eastern Florida State College, Mr. Michael Kador, that was held at Rockledge High School again on January nineteenth. Also special about this event, over four hundred students attended, and the preliminary results are telling us that over four million dollars in scholarships were earned by those four hundred students, so thank you, Mr. Kador, for your leadership in that regard. And last but not least, hope to see everyone here tomorrow at the King Center, as we take some time out to recognize all of our employees and definitely highlight Employees of the Year, so thank you very much. Hope to see you all then.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn, and thank you for reminding me about the Tiny House Project, and I was just blown away with that. It was just an amazing opportunity to see these young men and women, so proud of their accomplishment and what, and what they can do with, with, with great leadership and great partnership. I think they brought that house to Tallahassee, and it's there for the whole session, so I'm looking forward to seeing it when we go up in a week or two, to see how it's standing up up there. Real quick, I was able to attend, I think with Ms. Belford, we attended the City of Cocoa's Economic Development Update Session, always a yearly thing that the City of Cocoa puts on, and a lot of highlights about the partnerships with the school district and what the economic impact of our great school district is in a city like Cocoa, so we're happy to have them as a partner, and lots of great things happening in the City of Cocoa. Stevenson Elementary School of the Arts had their Blue Ribbon Celebration last Friday, I believe it was, the twelfth. Doctor, or Principal Michael Cornot put that together. Great, just a great opportunity for the kids to enjoy and kind of understand what it means to be honored as a Blue Ribbon School, to refresh everyone's memory, that's one of the top three hundred schools in the country, only twelve of them in Florida, and three of them were right here in Brevard, Stevenson being one of them, and you had former Speaker of the House Steve Chrisifouli was there as a speaker, Ms. Klein was there as a speaker, DJ Cornell, along with three former students, and they all kind of gave their perspectives on the Blue Ribbon side, but what a school like Stevenson means to the community and to those students as they move forward. So, thanks to Michael Cornot and all his leadership there, and all the best of luck to Stevenson. I know we're gonna talk about you all in a minute, but as a thirty-year military retiree, I would just like to thank each and every one of the young men and women who are sitting in uniform tonight from Astronaut ROTC. Your dedication and passion is just awesome. Thank you for taking that first step, and whether you end up serving in the military or not, the fact is that you've already taken a step towards becoming a leader in your community and as you go forward, so thank you to each and every one of you for continuing to pursue that. And finally, I think it would be remiss if we did not mention that our own Pam's birthday was last week, and that we truly appreciate everything she does to make this, this Board continue to function, so thank you, Pam, and happy birthday.
Well, then, to Mr. Craig.
That's all right. But anyway. Anything else? All right, thank you very much. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
Mr. Craig and members of the Board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition, one resolution, twenty-seven consent items, four action items, and two information items. You also have the Yellow Supplemental Agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There were revisions to Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations. Revisions were also made to Item F14 on support staff recommendations. made to Item F14 on support staff recommendations, Item F15 on instructional staff recommendations, Item F17 on suspension of instructional employee, and Item F18 on school year calendar standards and proposals for the 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020 school years.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Please vote.
Mine worked.
Mine worked.
All right. Mine is not working either. Let's, maybe that's why. You think that's it? Could be. All right.
There it is.
And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. There are six administrative staff members for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan. Are there any discussion? Please vote. Dr. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. This time, I'm supposed to read from a script, but I can't do that considering this gentleman here, who this may be one of his last board meetings as he completes a long and very wonderful career as educator here in Brevard County. Head SCORP over there, Mr. Mark Elliott, is wrapping up his career. And I've only had a chance to work with you now, Mr. Elliott, for the last two and a half years, but really appreciate your leadership on that campus. I appreciate your leadership in that community and wish you Godspeed on your well-deserved retirement. So, please allow Mr. Elliott to address the audience.
Well, I began my teaching career here in Brevard County when I was 22-years-old, and this has been an awesome place to grow up. My children, I don't know where the time has gone, when I think 33-years, I've worked with the best educators, I think, in the state. One of them is sitting right here, Ms. Eileen Hare, my assistant principal. She is awesome. I can't say thank you enough to you, Eileen. Also, met a lot of people while I was here. One of them happens to be standing over here, my wife, Erica. You know, in this job, you know you've got to have a lot of support at home, and she has always been there. Thank you for being there. Thank you for the Opportunity Board for allowing me this opportunity. Tina, thank you very much for your support. Thank you.
Mr. Elliott, you'll still bring the RV back for graduations, right? You still do that? I didn't hear a yes. Okay, okay, great, great. Just making sure. Next, we certainly welcome, you mentioned it, Ms. Eileen Hare, Assistant Principal of Satellite High School, who will also be retiring at the end of the school year. Ms. Hare, your service has been much appreciated, and we also wish you Godspeed for your retirement. Ms. Hare.
Thank you very much. I started my career here in 1990 when I moved from New York, and I was most fortunate to have administrators even before Mr. Elliott, who allowed me to have my entire career and move up the ladder, staying at Satellite High School for the last 28-years. So, it's been my pleasure, and I look forward to serving the Satellite High School community as I retire, because that's my home. Thank you.
Dr. Blackburn, can I say something real quick?
I just want to say thank you to both of you. You are obviously at my own alma mater, my school, and Ms. Hare, you apparently were there when I was still a student there. So, you've been there a long time, and I know you're part of the culture. You're going to be sorely missed, both of you. Thank you.
Ms. Hare, now that you're retiring, I'm sure you can share some stories with us about Ms. Deskovic, anything that I can use to my advantage after the meeting. Let us now recognize a new principal to our system, Ms. Susan Mulcrone, on her appointment as principal at Oak Park Elementary School, effective February 5, 2018.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Dr. Blackburn and the school board for this wonderful opportunity. I do start on February 5th, and I'm looking forward to meeting the staff, students, and the community at Oak Park Elementary. I would like to thank two people that came with me today. My husband unfortunately has training once a year, and this is his time out of town, so he couldn't be here. So, I have two good friends and two fellow principal colleagues, Jocelyn Harold and Ruthie Hanoff, and I appreciate them supporting me today. And I'd also like to thank Mrs. Klein for working with me through the whole interview process. And I'm also thrilled to meet the administrative staff at Oak Park Elementary and the current principal. I appreciate them coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Fellow principals, we're hiring here in Brevard. Okay. Next, I want to recognize Mr. Keith Barton for his transfer from Assistant Principal at North Central Alternative Learning Center to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at Melbourne High School.
I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Blackburn, for this opportunity. I'd like to thank Ms. Katakis, who hired me a year and a half ago to come in and revamp a program that needed a lot of work that we've put in, and I think we have a good foundation to move forward on right now. My wife for putting up with me over the past year and a half, the craziness that I'd bring home, and then Mr. Kirk for hiring me at Melbourne. I graduated from Melbourne 30-years ago, so didn't ever think I'd be going back home. So, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Congratulations go out to Mr. Carl Hoffman on his reclassification and transfer from the position of Manager of Accounting Services to the position of Director of Quality Control.
Dr. Blackburn, honorable members, I'm grateful for this opportunity to serve the district in the capacity as Director of Quality Control. I want to thank Kenny Zurker, our CFO, and Ms. Joanne Clark, the Director of Accounting Services, as well as my fellow managers and supervisors that have the confidence in me and all the support and encouragement to seek this position. I also wanted to thank my mother, my late father, my two older sisters that have given me love and support my whole life. I'm really, truly blessed. I view this position as very important and vital in supporting the superintendent and his leadership team, demonstrating excellence, and basically upholding the district's fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Rio, Brevard County, and to all the district students that it serves. I have two children attending Brevard Public Schools, Carl and Gretchen, and so indeed, I have a genuine invested interest in their success and the success of their peers. And so, in closing, I just want to say that I'm committed to the district's continuous improvement model. The quality control function was established to add value and improve operations, and that's what I intend to do. Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, congratulations to Mr. Michael Waller on his transfer from the position of Assistant Principal at Space Coast Junior/Senior High School to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at North Central Alternative Learning Center.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. First, Mr. Susan, we're still cleaning your mess in the backfield at Space Coast. Thank you very much for the opportunity, Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Blackburn, school board members. Appreciate the vote of confidence and the opportunity to continue the great work that Mr. Barton, his faculty and staff have done at the North Central Alternative Learning Center. It's exciting the things that are happening there, and I'm really looking forward to being a part of it. Also, looking forward to working with Ms. Katakis, Dr. Thedie, and the rest of the student services. And a final thank you to Ms. Sylvia Majescovic, who over the past year and a half has certainly supported me professionally, personally, kicked me a little bit, getting me out of my comfort zone, which I greatly appreciate. Taught me so much about Cuban food, Cuban coffee, and really how important it is to laugh every single day, and we do that. So, I'm going to make sure that continues to happen. So, thank you so much.
Dr. Blackburn, I just wanted to bring to your attention, in the event that you hadn't noticed, the volume of North Area greatness we have over here on this side of the boardroom this evening. So, just want to make sure that's not overlooked.
Dr. Blackburn, please tell us about tonight's recognition item.
Will do. Speaking of North Area.
Exactly.
So, I was left.
Tonight, we have a recognition of Astronaut High School's Junior ROTC Program, Go War Eagles. Did I say it right, Ms. Miller? Please welcome to the podium, Mr. Art Edwards, who in addition to his other community leadership functions, he serves as the Worshipful Master of Indian Ridge Lodge Number 85 in Titusville, and he will facilitate this portion of the meeting. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn, and thanks for the opportunity to make this presentation tonight. And before I get going, I guess I've got to ask Pam to come down and rescue me.
Dr. Mullins is on his way.
I would also like, thank you, Dr. Mullins. I would also like to thank the school board. I would like to thank members of the school board and attorney, Mrs. Livah. Thanks for this opportunity. I'm pretty excited about this presentation, and I'll tell you why I'm excited. When Hurricane Irma hit, it affected me probably like it didn't most people in Brevard County. I had damage at my home. I had property that I managed, only managed, that was damaged. And I got a phone call that said, "You need to go see the cemetery." And I said, "No, I don't. I've got enough problems." But at any rate, after a couple of days, I did go and take a look at the cemetery, and I was just totally blown away. It's not very often that I get overwhelmed, but I got overwhelmed. You know, in 2016, Hurricane Matthews did a lot of damage, and we hired some folks to clean that cemetery up. There were eight or nine people that worked for a week after Hurricane Matthews, and this was three times as worth as Matthews, this hurricane. And so, it really affected me. It affected me on a personal level, because I have relatives and friends in that cemetery, as well as the cemetery right next door. I was agonizing over it for days, and one day I was at the church, and the administrative person at the church said, "You need to call Colonel Wayland." Well, who's Colonel Wayland? He's from Astronaut High School, and he's been by here several times over the last few weeks, asking if he can help in any way. And the light bulb went off, and yes, he can help. So, I called Colonel Wayland, and he immediately said, "I will work into the schedule." He had a lot going on, and that was quite a relief. That was quite a relief. So, I am excited because we got the cemetery cleaned up, but I was more excited to see the young people, along with some parents, because they did have a few parents that came and helped as well. But I was really happy to see them come and do what they did, and I try and move this along. So, I guess I've covered the first page. The, excuse me, before we get into the presentation too much, I'd like to just kind of calibrate you on what's happened from a cemetery standpoint. In Titusville, there are two historic cemeteries in the African-American community, and they happen to be located one right next to the other. One is Oak Ridge Cemetery, which is a nonprofit, and the other one is privately owned, and that owner is in the audience tonight. I want to have the Oak Ridge Cemetery Board of Trustees stand up, please. These are members of the Board of Trustees, as well as myself. In the front, we've got Mr. Lee Ross Smith, who believe it or not is 84-years-old, and he's a pistol. Right behind him is Dr. George Fason, who is the President of the Oak Ridge Trustees. And in the very back is Kirk Davis, who not only serves as a trustee on Oak Ridge, but he happens to be the owner of the Davis Cemetery. Now, most folks would say, "You've got to be kidding. You know, you're competitors, and he's on your board." We're not competitors when it comes to what we do, and I can tell you, there is no finer personnel on our board than Kirk Davis. He's very knowledgeable. He's very helpful, and we're proud of that relationship. Also in the audience, we've got Dr. Verna Clay, Reverend Dr. Verna Clay from Antioch Christian School, and he's one of the community people that helped to get things organized and helped to get things going. And we also have my pastor, Reverend A.J. Davis. He's from St. James AME Church. So, at any rate, this is our little community group that's here tonight to do this recognition thing. What I would like to do is thank a couple of people, first of all. What the ROTC does would not be possible if they didn't have the consent and the help of the principal of Astronaut High School. So, I would like to recognize Ms. Miller, right here. If she will stand up, raise a hand, whatever. Thank you very much. They also have some outstanding support in terms of community. There's Catherine McMullin and her husband, Dennis, if you all would stand up as well. At this point, what I would like to do is have Colonel Wayland to come up, and he can do a few introductions, and then I'll go through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Art. I'm really humbled to be here and thankful to be here. The first thing I'd like to do is get Sergeant Negron up here. Come on up, Sergeant Negron. He's recently, he's each Junior ROTC program in the county, or everywhere pretty much, you have an officer, retired officer, and non-commissioned officer, and I'm the retired officer, and it's a senior Army instructor and the Assistant Army Instructor. He's been about a year now with us. Sergeant Negron. Before I forget and start thanking, I do, our wives came today, so I'll always, you know, I don't want to forget our wives. Diane and Mildred, please stand up. I'll start thanking everybody, and of course, you know, we were talking, I think we wore a uniform 30-some years. We've been married over 30-some years apiece. I had something like 70-some years together, and you know, God forbid I forget to thank the wives. I'd just like to double that. The conditions here in this county, sir, and at Astronaut High School, afford us the opportunity to instruct and lead and guide our cadets to do some great things in the community and to really have some experiential learning. It's different when you put up the seven Army values on a slide, loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, personal courage, and they learn the definition and they memorize them. But it's different when they have opportunities to go out and really, you know, see what that is, and it gets inculcated in them. And especially the selfless service part, it just continues to, you know, be a fabric of their nature. So, we had the opportunity this year, as every year, we have a service learning project, and the cadets actually decide what they're going to do, and you know, they were trying to figure out what in the community has a need, and it's all on them. And so, after Hurricane Irma, just about everybody in the room And so after Hurricane Irma, just about everybody in the room, I'm sure, was affected and needed some help. And so they came back and said, "Let's reach out to the community." And that's what I was doing, based on their decision-making, not mine or not Sergeant Negron's. They said, "Let's help people in the community. Colonel, we know everybody, you know, there's people, neighbors, we've been helping pick up trash and debris and fences, et cetera, et cetera." And so, that's kinda how the process all happens every year. And this year, you know, Hurricane Irma came along. I will tell you, I wanna also thank Art Edwards and you for actually doing this recognition, because what that does to the rest of our students is they understand how much their work that day actually helped, and how much the community needed their help. And it really opens their eyes and helps confirm them, you know, giving up their Saturday mornings. I think this is, we have another one, Playalinda? Was it Playalinda? Playalinda on Saturday, we're working with them out there to clean up. It's Phase Five of our service learning project. We've been five major events. So, you know, again, I just wanted to go ahead and thank everyone. I know we're limited on time here, so I'd just like, you know, I can't tell you what a great honor it is to do this. I've been doing this for 12 years at Astronaut High School, working with our young people. And I will tell you, the students that I have, I think we're the largest program at Astronaut. You know, I have nothing but faith in our future. They're great Americans, they're here tonight, they put on a uniform, they're willing to go out and give up their time, weekend, week in, week out. And so I'd like just everybody to stand up, and, you know, if you could face about, please join me in a round of applause for our students.[721.13][721.13](APPLAUSE) These are all our leaders. I know that our Cadet Battalion Commander Shelby Nixon, she's already enlisted with the ship date, I think in August, in the United States Navy. She gives the guidance to the battalion. I'll do a quick introduction. Robert Rember, he's been in the program from my right, your left. Robert Rember, he's been in the program for four years, member of Usher at St. James AME Church, he's our battalion chaplain. He's also a company commander. Josh Lugo, he's our S-1 Administrator. He, every cadet out of the 120 that we have has a cadet record. So every time my cadets volunteer to do Playalinda this weekend, we'll have 40 or 50 of them, he takes attendance, he puts it in their record, every promotion they get when they earn promotion and rank. So he sits there and he fat fingers that keyboard most of the time. I already introduced Shelby, she's our battalion commander. Victoria Campbell, she's our property manager, so she makes sure she does inventory, 100% inventories on all our Marietta property. Cadet Captain Mike Mavory, we just got an NRA grant for $6,000, and we just got some new Crosman Challenger rifles in, so we were changing out the sights on those for, he's the captain of our marksmanship team. And he's also the S-5, so he does, every time we do an event, he takes pictures and does a one-page write-up and shares it with the Talon Newspaper. Cadet Harmon is on the drill team, color guard, he's a young cadet, but he's doing great things. He's Staff S-3, he's the operation, so he does operation orders for all our events, risk management worksheets for every event. You know, so we implement water or whatever to mitigate the risk of whatever event that we're going to, and, you know, Ethan Harmon's getting that stuff done. Cadet Destiny Coran, also she's got the camera with her. That's her job mainly, is S-5, she takes pictures. And then Cadet Garrett Howell, all these beautiful uniforms, he's got about, I don't know, he's, he does a lot of moving that stuff around shelves and putting it by size and that kinda stuff. So they all have jobs where regularly that they do work for the rest of the battalion, the 120 cadets, as well as, you know, our leadership out here. So, again, I wanna, I just wanna thank them. Go ahead and take a seat.[872.82][872.82](APPLAUSE) And again, I just wanted to reiterate and thank everybody for the recognition. It's really gonna help and reinforce Art. You know, our other cadets that aren't here, when we go back to the classroom and the cadets talk about it, and, you know, we go out, it'll reinforce the impact upon which it had, and the meaningfulness of, you know, our future endeavors as it comes to service learning and community service and color guards in the community, et cetera, et cetera. And so, McMullins and Ms. Miller, thank you very much. And did I forget anybody? Sergeant Negron? He keeps me honest. Okay. I hope I'm not out of time. Thank you so much.[914.13][914.13](APPLAUSE)
Okay, thank you, Colonel. Okay, I'm gonna try and move this along. There's a couple other folks that I need to introduce. I would like the Masons from Indian River Lodge Number 85 in Titusville to please stand This is a part of our craft, and we have a mandate for community service, and we take that very serious. So we'll move this right along. Success. Okay, if you look at this picture, this was a few days after the hurricane, and these pictures here were graciously supplied by Kirk. He went out right away, I guess, and started taking pictures and what have you. I wanna try and describe it for you. You look at it, and you can see. It's not a pretty picture. These pictures are a closer view of what the landscape looked like. It was a mess. It was a bad mess. I had a picture of the students, the ROTC rather, working, and I have to tell this story. As they were getting started, Dr. Fason, being an educator, being a leader, he took it upon himself to start directing them on how to do this thing. And Colonel Wayland just said, you know, "We got this." And so he backed away, and honest to goodness, they started on the south end, and they started moving stuff, and I turned around 10 minutes later, and they were moving. I mean, they were cleaning, they were moving, they were putting stuff on trucks. It was amazing. It was really amazing. And within three hours, they had the place cleaned. The bottom two pictures, well rather, the picture to the, in the middle with the four graves, that shows the cemetery after it was cleaned. The bottom left shows that a portion of it was cleaned. If you look at the bottom right, you'll see a part of the debris that they collected and piled up. This happened over a period of about three hours. Now, I said earlier that after Hurricane Matthews, we had eight or nine people that worked their week. So, I mean, you know, just kinda contrast that. Granted, these are much younger people. But I think the fact that they are very methodical, I think the fact that they are very organized. And I watched Colonel Wayland walk away, and for the students to take over, or the cadets to take over, the leaders, and I may be mixing up my terminology here, but whoever was in charge was in charge. And the kids all listened, well, not the kids, the cadets all listened to that person in charge. I was amazed. I was just totally amazed. But it was a good effort, and we can't applaud the effort enough. We really can't. Oh, shouldn't have gone to that. So I'll ask Dr. Fason and Kirk Davis to come up, and we wanna give something to Colonel Wayland. Colonel Wayland, you need to come back up. If you wanna follow along what's on this proclamation, you can. Oh, you don't have your glasses on.[1140.13][1140.13](LAUGHING) Can you read? This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Oak Ridge Cemetery, a nonprofit cemetery, and the Davis Memorial Cemetery, a privately-owned cemetery, are both continuously located in the historic cemetery serving the North Brevard African-American community. And whereas on September 10th, 2017, the devastation of Hurricane Irma left the Oak Ridge Cemetery and the adjacent Davis Cemetery inaccessible and unusable for burial purposes, and it was severely impacted. And whereas both cemeteries were completely cleaned and brought to an operational status on September 30th, 2017 by members of the Indian River Lodge Number 85, the Oak Ridge Board of Trustees, St. James African Methodist Episcopal Church, Titusville, Shallow AME Church, MEMS, North Brevard Community Volunteers, and Astronaut High School ROTC, led by the Colonel Brian Wayland. And whereas it is recognized that the September 10th, 2017 Oak Ridge Cemetery cleanup was an enormous effort and was largely achieved through the organized and methodical efforts of the Astronaut High School ROTC, led by the Colonel Wayland. And whereas, community service has become hallmark of Colonel Wayland and the Astronaut School ROTC, who over the past three years have performed other notable community services, such as cleanup of the Lowering, La Graine Cemetery in Titusville, and most recently assisted in preparing food packages at Satellite High School for hurricane-stricken residents of Puerto Rico. Therefore, be it resolved on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018, the North Brevard Community publicly recognized the community's support of Colonel Wayland and the Astronaut High School ROTC, we hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018, as a day of recognition for Colonel Wayland and the members of the ROTC, Astronaut High School. Mr. Fason.
Good job.[1314.16][1314.16](APPLAUSE) Thank you. Y'all need to come on up here real quick. Come on, get around here. This is all due to you. Come on. Come on up here, get a graphic and we'll stand in the back here. Come on, Dr. Fason. There you go. Mr. Davis. They saw me. Yes, going down there. Chris, come on up here. Ms. Miller, come on up here.
I'm taking pictures.[1352.51][1352.51](LAUGHING)
We wouldn't have been able to do it without you. Come on.
We'll do it in front of the diocese, have Dr. Blackburn and our chair and join us. We'll do it.
I'm gonna have you make that X back to the center and do it back about four.
Yeah, you're back to bed in six hours.
I know, it works very well.
It's awesome.
Well, thank you, as you guys are clearing out, again, from the entire school district, thank you for the example you are setting for the rest of your compadres. So, thank you very, very much, all the best to you. This brings us to resolutions and proclamations. Dr. Blackburn.
Tonight, we have a proclamation designated, designating February as Black History Month. Mr. Reed.
Whereas the month of February is recognized nationwide as Black History Month, and whereas it is important to understand the different origins, culture, and heritage of all Americans, and whereas much recognition is due to the many outstanding African-Americans who overcame many obstacles to excel in such fields as education, medicine, the arts, sports, and business, and whereas learning from the struggles and accomplishments of others helps strengthen our bond as a national family, and whereas it is appropriate for schools to plan lessons and special activities to recognize the important role African-Americans have played in the growth and prosperity of our nation, now, therefore, be it resolved, that the School Board of Brevard County wishes to call attention to the important historical contributions of African-Americans to endorse the observation of Black History Month in Brevard County public schools.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, second by Mr. Ziegler. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. We are now at public comments. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Please be reminded that statements shall be directed to the board chairperson. No person may address or question board members individually. Board chairperson may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If an individual does not observe reasonable decorum, the board chairperson may request that individual leave the meeting. Please keep in mind, we often have children present and/or children viewing our board meetings, and we encourage an environment appropriate for all. While no action will be taken this evening by the board on items raised in public discussion, board members may assist with connecting public speakers to district staff that can assist with concerns, respond in brief to comments made by speakers that require immediate clarification, request that a staff member respond more fully following the board meeting. These responses and requests will take place at the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. I do request that you speak into the microphone, state your first and last name, and your subject topic. And before we get started, it's very exciting, we have a new timer that is up here, so you now have a three-minute countdown, Vanessa, that will unfortunately also give me a warning beep. So if you hear the beep go off, that will be also a cue that it is, that the timing has gone down. So thank you to our ET team that assisted in getting that set up. Hopefully, I remember to push the buttons correctly. We have four speakers tonight. Dan Bennett, Anthony Calucci, and Vanessa Skipper for the first three. Mr. Bennett.
So you're testing that device on me right now. I can't wait to see if I launch up or fall through the floor. Good evening. Go on, push your button, let's see what happens. All right, good evening, Dr. Blackburn and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I gave you homework to do, an assignment to finish several months ago. We were negotiating, and things weren't going so well, and well, we finished the finish line, so as far as I'm concerned, you all finished the assignment to some kinda satisfaction. You've handed it in, and we've accepted it, and now we're gonna take it to the members to grade, but I owe you some feedback in the interim while we prepare the vote. We should be able to report to you February 13th, if we have a contract, or if we have ratified this or not, but, oh, that's nerve-wracking watching that thing go down. Fueling, fueling the rocket? I wanna give you the answer key, if I can, because there was a lot of animosity during this negotiations, no doubt. Normally, we get along well, normally we can all talk well together, and yet some of that was put aside. So let me let you in on the answer key. All right? There's two types of problems in the world. There's everything, and there's something else. Everything being our work conditions, planning time, how long it takes to grade the papers, what the conferences look like, what the workload looks like, the scheduling, the hours of the day, how nice it is to work in Brevard Schools, how nice our school district is, our superintendent can beat up your superintendent, the district is nice, the beaches are good, all those neat things that make Brevard County wonderful, that's everything, and that's one category, and we spend a lot of time on that. That includes annual contract job protection, that includes protections on the evaluation, that includes some flex time, which was a cool thing, half an hour a week. So you've got everything over here, and we work on that, and we do our usual stuff. You've seen ugly sides of us before, where we get upset at the table. You've seen ugly sides of us before, where we get upset at the table, and we start emailing you, and we take to Facebook. You've seen that. But then, there's another type of problem. Wait, there's everything. What else is there? You're messing with our money, and that's the other type of problem. And you'll notice that's where it got pretty ugly. Now, at some extent, on your side of it, you have to be frustrated, because you say, "Well, how much money can we give?" No matter how much we give, they're going to say they want more, right? I mean, we know that routine. But the feedback, I'll give you the little secret, you know, the secret behind the curtain, is that we have to be in range every year. We have to be in range with the other counties around us. Now, there's nothing wrong with we do a little bit better. We did do a little bit better a couple of years ago, and that was to make up for all those years that we were still a little bit behind other places. But if you're wondering why we're so mad, if you're like, "Man, we're doing the work. We gave an offer, that's our job." If you're wondering why we're so mad about it, take a look at other counties around, and if we're not in range, we're going to be mad, because you know from your own personal wealth, it's wonderful if you don't, but you know from your own personal experiences, family experiences, friends' experiences, if you're messing with money, it's a whole 'nother situation. So, we have an offer now, we're going to take it to teachers, and you'll get, wow, what happens? And you'll get the feedback at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Calucci.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. In December two thousand sixteen, I stood up here and discussed the approval of our two thousand sixteen-seventeen contract. The Florida Today noted Anthony Calucci warned the board that another small raise next year would not cut it. As someone who has a good pulse on what's going on with teachers, I say this not as a threat, but a reality. "You must do better next year than you did this year," he said. Yet, you had the audacity to initially offer us less than we got last year, and you saw what happened this year: protests, marches, emails, work to the contract, teachers telling you, they've had it with excuses about poor pay. Apparently, you didn't believe me last year. Let's try this again. You must do better next year than you did this year. I assure you that this year's protests will pale in comparison to next year's if you don't address this. I've heard some of the chatter about how could I, Anthony Calucci, get our teachers riled up over a few hundred bucks? First off, I helped our teachers get organized. They're plenty smart enough to get riled up all on their own. I'm always dumbfounded when those in power tell others how they should protest. Frankly, it's laughable. Come tell our teachers how to protest after living on a BPS teacher's salary for a decade. Just a few years ago, when I had fifteen years of experience and a specialist degree, my family qualified for WIC. Come tell me how to protest after you've marched around the Wind Dixie trying to find the WIC-approved can of beans. You may not like me or the means I advocate to protest, but I represent the honorable teachers of this district, not you. I'm not going anywhere anytime soon, and I will demonstrate an unwavering support for teacher pay. Someday, our pay will surpass the state average, and you or whoever is in your seat will congratulate themselves for making that happen. And someday, I will stop that conversation dead in its tracks and remind them that the credit goes to all those teachers who put their feet down and fought for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. And Ms. Skipper, followed by Mr. Alley.
Good evening, Vanessa Skipper, vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers and English Teacher at Cocoa High School. Leaders must be willing to give up more than the people they lead. Have you given up more than the teachers of this county? Did you give up a raise for five years in a row? Did you give up precious planning time to save the district eleven million dollars? Do you continually take on extra work for no compensation? Do you constantly settle for less? Have you given up your house, lived without, been denied a loan because your income isn't steady enough? After you pay your bills, are you comfortable? Have you ever thought twice about having a biopsy to see if you have cancer or not because you didn't have the thousand dollars to pay the deductible? Or do you wonder how you're going to pay for your son's braces, or if you'll have to tell him that lacrosse is too expensive of a sport for him to try? The answers to those questions should tell you whether or not you, as a leader, have given up more than those you lead. Some people might expect me to get up here and thank the school board for giving teachers a raise, but I'm not going to thank the board for doing something it should not only have done in the first place, but could have done better. I'm not going to thank you for choosing to put fourteen new initiatives in front of the people who pour their blood, sweat, and tears into their classrooms every day. I'm not going to thank you for issuing narratives such as people process performance when there is a distinct failure to put people first. I'm not going to thank you for only telling the community half of the story by releasing information that boasts about the raises we received a few years ago that only made a slight dent in the effort to get teachers back on track with compensation. After spending more than a decade in this district, I expect more from those who are supposed to be my leaders. Why did we have to take bargaining as far as we did this year? Why did we have to declare impasse when we submitted our language for annual contract job security and fair raises from the very beginning? I wondered how the district's team could show up week after week and just say no after no after no, or have no answer. I wondered if they weren't prepared, or if they would just hope we would get tired and give up. We didn't give up, and we won't give up. Your compromise is not enough to make up what we've lost over the years and what we've compromised to help keep this district serving every student with excellence as a standard. Your compromise is not enough to leave teachers feeling appreciated and supported, or enough to allow teachers to breathe a sigh of relief. Your compromise is not enough to help teachers secure retirement or look to the future. When we return to the table, I hope you've had time to think about whether or not you've given up more than the people you lead. Jackie Robinson once said that "A life isn't significant except for its impact on other lives." What impact will you have on the lives of teachers in Brevard County? What impact will you have on the teachers you lead? Will teachers remember you? And if they do, will it because you left them better than when you found them? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Finally, Mr. Alley. Paul Alley? Last call, Paul Alley? Oh, he's out there? Okay, thank you. The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is greatly appreciated. Are we all good without a break?
Yes.
That moves us into the consent agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
There are twenty-seven agenda items under this category, two with prior information.
What are the... Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Does any board member wish to pull any items?
F-eighteen.
F-eighteen, Mr. Ziegler. Any others? Pam, would you please pull F-eighteen for discussion? This time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of the item that was pulled for discussion.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Deskovich, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? And the motion passes five to nothing. Mr. Ziegler, F-eighteen was pulled. Your motion.
We'll start by moving to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Belford. Discussion, Mr. Ziegler.
Yes, sir. I wanted to clarify with the board primarily for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen year. I thought when we had our conversations giving directions to staff, that there seemed to be acknowledgement by the board that it was a good idea to consider Veterans Day, especially when Veterans Day falls on a weekend, that the weekday not be a day off and instead be a dedicated day to have veterans in our schools. Now, maybe I misunderstood that from the board, or maybe there's a reason that that didn't happen, but I'd still like to, I'd like to find out how the board feels about that, or if there's specifically a logistical issue that makes that impossible. Come on up.
I just wanted, yeah, I wanted to hear from them if we change it, how that affects
Yeah, thank you. Right now, Veterans Day is in contract language. In order to move Veterans Day as an unpaid holiday or a day that isn't recognized, it needs to go through the bargaining process, so it is specifically in contract language.
That must be a day off.
That it must be a day off, yes. Like, it's part of bargaining, just like everything else. It can certainly be brought to the table, but it is part of bargaining, it is part of the contract right now.
Okay. I guess I didn't realize that. Maybe we should have given direction a while back to address that. I'm not looking to get employees to work an extra day. I just think that majority, if not, I don't want to say all our students, but I think the majority of students wake up on that day, especially when it's not the holiday, and don't appreciate what our veterans have done for us, and I think it's just a golden opportunity to educate them more in depthly about our great country and our great heroes that support us. So, although Veterans Day doesn't fall on a weekend in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and probably based on the cycle of maybe not for a while, I would like to address that as a modification, if the union would talk about that, because I think we can do better for our military community, especially here in Brevard, it's so large. Well, in that case, then, I guess there's no changing it, because I don't think we want to, we can't hash it out with our friends in the back right now. So, you want to hash that out right now?
Yeah.
We'll put you back on the launchpad over here and have some conversation. In that case, I'm good then, and let's move forward.
Just, I will make one comment, Mr. Ziegler, simply because after we had that discussion, and I certainly respected your opinion about it, I kind of still leaned towards wanting the day off, but realized that, you know, if we could come forward with some sort of solution that would, it would make the Veterans Day, you know, if we could see some sort of plan, then certainly, we could do it. I did, I will say, I got lots of feedback from the military community, specifically our ROTC instructors and members of MOA, the Military Officers Association, Cape Canaveral Conference, or Cape Canaveral Group that I belong to, and they were all pretty much solidarity about continuing to have a day off, and a lot of it revolves around the ceremonies, the ROTC units that participate in multiple ceremonies. I think, you know, Tim Thomas, you know, told me, he basically laid out his day that Viera does, and they're going ceremony to ceremony throughout a day. And certainly, I guess they could do them on weekends, but they had always, the group had always kind of figured out what the schools were going to do so that the kids would have the time off, that they would make sure that they were there. And so, I certainly think it's open to discussion. We could have a better discussion about it. We certainly probably want to include them in that as well, though, because they were very adamant about that portion of it, and certainly, we could probably figure it out over a weekend. But I can see pluses and minuses to both sides. I just wanted to bring that up, that there was, I did get quite a bit of feedback.
Then, maybe some clarification for me. My understanding that all these ceremonies occurred on Veterans Day, not necessarily on the day off, if it wasn't Veterans Day. So, will these take place on the Monday that we have off?
So, because it was going to be on a Sunday, they realized that they couldn't do stuff on Sunday, and like, Sunday mornings because of church and things, and so, they were still planning to do Mondays. I think it just was one of those things where all the pieces kind of fit together, where they're like, "We don't really want to touch this right now," you know? And I think if we thought about it, as you said, and had a truly, you know, proactive plan on how we're going to address Veterans Day inside the schools and not have a holiday, then I think they'd be all over it. I think we could figure out how to work with them, but we would need to have that planning in advance.
Let's have some conversation and see if we can plan something for the future, because I think we can do better for our students. I know plenty of schools do a great job on that, but I think we should have a full county press on supporting our veterans.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Sorry, Ms. Belford?
I think we all want to say something.
Ms. Moore, since you are at the podium, this is, we have discussed this, and so, I really am asking this question for an opportunity for you to explain it to our public. Some of the feedback that I have received on the calendar is, "Why do we have such a long winter break, and why can we not get the kids out of school prior to Memorial Day?" My understanding is it has a lot to do with our testing window established by the legislation that was passed next year, but could you, for those who may be paying attention to the meeting this evening, could you please explain how that works and why we can't make all those dreams come true?
Yeah, absolutely. The state gave us a very defined testing window, and for the most part, every single test we give, with the exception of third grade, third grade ELA and writing, all fall between May first and May twenty-eighth. And when I surveyed the schools to see bare minimum, how many days do we need for one shot at the testing, no makeups, no any other opportunity, it was a minimum of twelve full school days without any makeups. And that's the high schools. It didn't take into account the middle and the schools that are middle, senior, high school, middle, senior model, and so, there is absolutely no way to get that done if we don't go through May twenty-eighth and then have exam days after that. In order to go through May twenty-eighth and have exam days after that, we have to push the whole calendar back. The only other viable option is moving first semester into what we would consider January, and that is a no-go across the board from our community. I got that message loud and clear.
And so, just for clarification, for those who have not had the painful experience of trying to make all of these pieces fit together.
Yeah.
Our winter break is extended because we have to have a certain number of days in second semester.
Correct.
And so, we've extended that winter break to allow us to have that testing window in May and still have semester exams.
Yeah, exactly. Both semesters have to equal ninety days. Ninety days is what is needed in order to earn a high school credit, period the end, based on the minutes that we have in class. And again, we need to extend through May twenty-eighth in order to meet the testing requirements that the state gave us.
And one more point of clarification, the state has said that we may not start those exams prior to May one, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Deskovich.
Just one more point of clarification on there. The concerns I've also heard from the community besides the extended winter break is the starting of winter break on Christmas Eve. They don't understand why we can't push that back, get out the twenty-second or something and shorten in January, so if you could clarify that for us, please.
Yeah, you bet. The state statute says we can't start before August tenth, and you'll notice on the two calendars, August tenth is the start date on the first, and I believe August twelfth is the start date on the other because August tenth is a Saturday. In order to fit the ninety days in with the contract days, so there are certain things that are in contract, like Veterans Day and like workdays, we have to go through a certain number of days. And so, for the eighteen-nineteen calendar, our last day of school is actually the twenty-first. So, we have the twenty-second and the twenty-third, which is the weekend before Christmas Eve. But you are correct, on the twenty-nineteen-twenty-twenty calendar, our last day of school is the twenty-third, and it's because we have to fit ninety days in between August tenth, or in this case, August twelfth, because of the fall of the weekend, and our winter break. Again, it would be an easy fix to extend first semester into January. That fixes a lot, but again, the community doesn't want that, the school board, nobody wants that, and so, it does force some compromises based on statutory language and contract language. We just don't have any days to play with in there. We have to go to school every day between August tenth or August twelfth and December twenty-second.
So, if for the nineteen-twenty calendar, the contract was adjusted to go to school on Veterans Day, could they get out a day earlier for Christmas break? Because that would be one day.
Yes.
Okay. And if we vote on this tonight, this may not be a question for you. I'm not sure this question is for. If we vote on this to approve tonight, is there any chance of adjusting it for twenty nineteen-twenty if we desired?
Yeah, it's a tentative for the nineteen-twenty.
Yeah, it's a tentative.[1793.54]
Yeah, it's a tentative. You can always bring it back. Mr. Susan?
I did want to say the feedback that I got from multiple veterans organizations was that they did want to have a day off. And that, and the main reason was, Weaver called me and he said that they wanted to put their big Memorial Day program at the Veterans Resource Center up there in Merritt Island on that day. So he said that when you have the school and everybody's there, it cuts down on his opportunity to do that. Second piece to that was that I feel that we need to have a discussion, because what I saw at Sea Park was amazing. So I would like to figure a way to make both pieces work, to promote the veterans programs within the county, because I do tell you as a teacher, we didn't do as strong of a job as I could have in the classes that I was a part of. And then the other piece is, is that I do wish staff would have brought this to us, being the fact that if it wasn't an issue, and we did give board direction to do that prior, that we would have known prior to today that we couldn't do it. So maybe there was an opportunity before to do that. And then the last thing I wanted to say was thank you, because this has been a process. And you've been pulling together people and everything else. I want to say thank you for everything that you did. And that's it.
Are there any more comments? Call the question, please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. We'll move on to the action agenda, which includes a public hearing for the student progression plan and attendance boundary changes. Dr. Blackburn?
Yes, sir, Mr. Craig and members of the board. First is item G38 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Belford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
We move on to G39, which is department school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Belford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
Mr. Craig and members of the board, item G40 is the public hearing for the 2017, 2018 student progression plan. This item went for information on November 21, 2017, and for action on December 12, 2017. Tonight, we will hold a public hearing to approve the Brevard Public Schools Student Progression Plan for 2017, 2018 school year.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone that wishes to address the 2017, 2018 student progression plan at this time? Is there anyone that wishes to address the 2017, 2018 student progression plan at this time? Hearing no speakers, I now declare the public hearing for the 2017, 18 student progression plan closed. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
Item G41 is the public hearing for attendance boundary changes for the 2018, 2019 school year. This item also went for information on November 21, November, 2017, and for action on December 12, 2017. Tonight, we hold a public hearing to approve the following. One, attendance boundary changes for the 2018, 2019 school year as follows. Croton Elementary to Longleaf Elementary, proposal A. Kennedy Middle to McNair Middle, proposal B1. Meadow Lane Primary and Meadow Lane Intermediate to Discovery Elementary, proposal D. Endeavor Elementary and Cambridge Elementary to Saturn Elementary, proposal E. Melbourne High, West of Brandywine, to Heritage, proposal F6. Central Middle to Southwest Middle, proposal G. Special consideration to allow the following students to remain at their current school, no transportation provided by the district, rising sixth and eighth grade students, and any current students affected by Melbourne High School Attendance Boundary Change, proposal F6.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone that wishes to address this item? Is there anyone that wishes to address item G41, attendance boundary changes for the 2018, 19 school year? Hearing no speakers, I now declare the public hearing for the 2018, 19 Attendance Boundary Changes closed. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Ms. Belford?
Just a quick comment and message of thanks to our facility staff and our leading and learning staff, and Dr. Blackburn. In all of the work that went into these proposals, I don't think in all of the years that I have been interacting with Brevard Public Schools and seen attend, attendance boundary change issues come forward, that we have had no one voicing concern at the board meeting. And so I think that, that speaks volumes as to the spectacular work that you, Dr. Blackburn, and all of the staff has done on really working to meet the needs of the students. So thank you.
Is there any other discussion? I do have one question, Dr. Blackburn, and it kind of came to me as I was reading this and hearing you speak it. And it's nothing that probably needs to be, that's decided now, but I do think we probably need some clarification, and it's regarding special consideration number two there, allowing the students to remain at their current school with no transportation provided by the district. My question is, is if there is our special programs at that school that, that fall under our new transportation option, does this supersede that? I think we just probably need some clarification on, on maybe where, where some of those routes lay and that type of thing, because there may be some overlap there that may supersede that. And again, nothing that probably needs to happen right this second, but I think we probably need to clarify that.
We can do that, but I just got the high sign from the back of the room saying that yes, if that's the situation, then transportation will be provided in that scenario you just mentioned.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. We will move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review, and will be brought back for action at a... Vote. Oh, jeez, you're right. I'm sorry. Thank you. I was so excited about getting through that quickly. We forgot to call the question. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Now, we will move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review, and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Blackburn?
There are two items, Mr. Craig, under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss an item? Yes, 42. Mr. Ziegler, that is H42, the contract with Kelly Educational Services. There is no motion required. Mr. Ziegler, please lead our discussion.
Thank you. I've got some additional questions. I've asked some that have been answered. I've always liked the idea of having a relationship with an employee leasing company, basically because I've always considered drop, almost like forced retirement, I hate to say this in public, but like age discrimination. I believe that any employer, any manager should be able to hire anybody they feel is going to do the appropriate job for them, and that age should not be a detriment, a detriment to that decision. And so I had, had suggested for many years that we did this, so that a retiree could come back and work for us. Of course, at that time, I was suggesting it for a full-time capacity as opposed to a part-time capacity. And I'm curious whether or not that would be an option for full-time employees to come back and work through this method. I was wondering if anybody can answer that question. I do have other questions that'll need to be answered if somebody wants to come up. And according, and then, and of course, that all is based on FRS challenges, and having read the FRS rules, it appears that they don't differentiate at all between part-time and full-time. So from that perspective, there doesn't seem, seem to be any foul as to whether it's a part-time or full-time person coming to work for us through a contracted service.
Correct.
Will part, will full-time be an option that we could take advantage of?
So you're saying if we have a teacher who is, who's just retired within their first year of FRS, is that what you're asking?
Well, once they exit, once they exit drop, the key here is that they can then go to work for, for an employee leasing company, and we can contract that person back, whether it be for 10 hours a week or 40 hours a week, I don't see that there's any difference. Will we provide that opportunity for employees if they really would like to continue working for us, and we want them to work for us, of course, through that process?
Well, it depends on the contract that we have with Kelly. If we're doing short-term leaves with the contract that we do with Kelly, that they could, they could come and take over a short-term assignment. But to work for Kelly and work for us for a full year under the, under the Kelly contract, I don't see that happening.
So that would require a modification of the contract? Or is it not a service that they provide?
It's, it's not a, a piece of the contract that I've ever seen, no.
Okay. And looking at, and thank you for all the documentation that you sent us. And pardon me for being so inquisitive.
No, that's fine.
However, this is a $7.5 million a year contract, recurring contract every year. And it's, it's tasting a little bit like unfortunately the EDR situation with all of the propaganda and great things that are going to be done that I didn't fully question when we went through the others. So I'm trying to be a little more analytical right now. And just because we got a list of great things, which I saw was going to be up there, doesn't mean that I necessarily buy them all. So the first thing that I did is I looked at the, the savings. It's always great when we can save money around here, and I know the sport champions that wholeheartedly. So I looked at the calculations on here where it shows that we stand to save about $319,000 a year, and that sounds awesome. However, one of the items, and I had to get educated on a lot of this, because a lot of people don't realize, but the board is not well-versed in all the little things that go on in, in a school, so frequently we have to go ask a lot of questions. So I spoke to some secretaries and right off the bat to find out how much time they actually spend, because when I saw two and a half hours per secretary per day, times 40 weeks, I was really shocked to see a secretary spending two and a half hours a day, because that would be like, that's the primary job for a secretary, is to find substitutes. And, and I did find out that in fact, there are occasionally days where they spend an excessive amount of time. But I was glad to find that we have an automated system. I don't know if the board's familiar with the automated system of Smartfind, and that very frequently, teachers will, well, teachers will put in when they have a vacated, they're going to not be at school, and there are substitutes that can pick up that time. And secretaries are very happy when all of their openings are picked up, and all they have to do is, is print out a schedule for those substitutes, and they have very little work in front of them. So most of the secretaries, I said, I talked to, spoke, said on average, maybe an hour a day spent on that, even though there are some days they might spend a couple hours, because they have to call around, because the automated system didn't fill. So that leads me to a couple, to a question and a concern. My first concern is, I don't see two and a half hours per day per, per secretary. And so I really contest that $900,000 savings. And I, I do see that you added back an hour of time, but that's a net of about half a million dollars, depending on where that true number really falls. And what I was curious was, is what do we think we're, we're solving as far as secretarial time? How is this going to really diminish the amount of time that a secretary spends dealing with substitutes and giving you an opportunity to validate some of that, that savings?
It actually would take that function off of them. The only thing that they would be required to do would, is the budget piece, where they would have to align where we're drawing the funds from. So finding the substitute, whether it's the night before, the week before, or the day of, would be on the onus of this contract.
I don't think there's a single secretary out there that believes that, and I don't think there's a single secretary or principal out there that doesn't want the ability to be able to hire or to call in their preferred subs, because schools have some preferred subs that they call on a regular basis. So you're telling me a secretary will never have to deal with anything other than printing out the schedule going forward?
I'm saying that is the job of Kelly Services, is to find the substitute. Also, just to make note of one of the things that you said, they still would be able to choose where they wanted to work, and the schools still would have those sustained relationships that they currently have with those substitutes that they use on a regular basis.
I don't, I don't see that. So we're guaranteeing that Kelly Services will fill 100% of those positions?
I have not seen 100% fill rate in any school district in my last nine years in HR. What I have seen in the experience that I've had with Kelly Services is an improved rate. And I do have some statistics that I can share with you about our current fill rate.
And I would agree. I can't imagine 100% fill rate, which then leaves somebody to steal, deal with filling those vacant slots in the classroom, whether it be negotiating with other teachers and offering comp time to hop in, or whether they have to make some last-minute calls. So I don't see the secretary completely out of the loop on solving that problem. Our current system, being automated, does almost the same thing with the exception of you're hoping that we will have a better fill rate. So to that question is, have we analyzed, and I believe I've asked the question, but I'm asking it, have we analyzed what the problem is, why, where the challenges are with the fill rates, whether it be specific types of positions, whether it be specific schools?
Yes, both. But actually, I think as your HR chief, the biggest issue that we have here in Brevard is that I do not have a person who can recruit on a regular basis. I have one person who is a support staff who's over this entire system. Kelly will offer recruitment on a daily basis, and so that I will have a larger pool to draw from. So that will help to increase the fill rate.
And what makes it more attractive for an applicant to sign up with Kelly Services rather than with, with us? Is there something that, I understand the recruiting, and that's great.
It's a great question.
Dr. Blackburn's asking for attention.
Just a question. Is the board interested in workshopping this item? If you feel you don't have enough information to proceed, we can certainly create a workshop situation for the board to discuss in detail, if that's the preference of the board.
I, I'm not opposed to that. I, and again, I've, I've suggested we do this for a long time, for full-time, although that doesn't seem to be part of this contract. So I'm not opposed to the concept, and I think it, and I, but I'd like to know it's going to solve the problem. And the reason I'd really like to know to solve the problem, I'll get to the next point and then wrap this up real quick, is that I don't see it saving near as much as this analysis is saving. And as if you all, you got an email from Mark Langdorff today, because I was questioning the numbers on our cost avoidance.
No, it's not.
The almost $1.2 million in medical and the Affordable Care Act. Those are not expenses we currently have at this time. They are possible expenses down the road, but not in any foreseeable future will we incur those expenses. So that's about $1.5 million. And that's assuming that the secretarial savings is there. So we're looking at spending possibly one to $1.5 million more than we're currently spending right now, because, and also fingerprinting. Are we not going to do fingerprinting anymore?
No.
We do it for all of our other contractors, we're not going to do it for...
It will be done by Kelly. Kelly has system already in place due to other districts.
Well, that's a minimal savings there, but I'm concerned that we're including almost $1.5 million of savings that we're not spending money on right now.
If I may answer a question you asked earlier on the time of secretaries, there's a piece that Dr. Kent was unable to answer to, and that's the payroll side of what they have to do. There's the piece of what's done in the school of finding a substitute and getting them in. Then there's the other side of coding, putting the paperwork together and getting it entered. When you put the whole together, that's where we're coming with the two and a half. When you put the whole together, that's where we're coming with the two and a half. The ACA, we did list those as avoidable costs. The ACA currently under this administration is changing daily. At the time we did this, some of the changes that have taken place, including last week's, were not in there. So it is a, if they do not totally repeal it, we will be looking in the future at having to offer substitutes full-time benefits if they're working an average of more than 30 hours a week.
30 hours a week on average over nine months, if I recall correctly.
Actually, that is not 100% correct, but it's close. But this would help us save that. The other thing that we need to look at, you asked and it didn't get to be answered, is Kelly Services, a benefit to the substitutes, they will get benefits they don't get underneath us, under Kelly. They will be able to get medical insurance and other insurances that we do not offer them, working for Kelly.
As a voluntary, for a premium, they would have that option, which that's nice. That's an incentive. Because one of the things I was going to, I've been suggesting is that we make available to part-time employees under certain criteria, number of hours worked or something of that nature, access to our health and wellness centers in some capacity, whether it be for a small fee or not, as an incentive to want to work for us so that they have access to that. So those, I think incentives is the solution to stepping that up. And I would be, I'd be open to workshopping this so we can talk about this in more detail. But at this point in time, I don't see that the benefit is worth the increased expense. And at this point, I'm looking at an additional expense of about $1.5 million a year. So based on the size of this contract, $7.5 million a year contract, I would like to spend more time analyzing this.
Ms. Tuskovich?
If we workshop it, are you on a time schedule? I know you wanted to implement this, you're proposing to implement this next school year. So what, how quickly do we need to workshop it and make a decision?
We would need to workshop it as soon as possible. February.
Okay.
That said, based on the comments of Mr. Ziegler, I clearly do not want the board to feel like you're up against any kind of emergency. As the board knows, this was on a list, a long list of potential cost savings measures that staff and I were asked to look into. We presented it at a board retreat. I thought we had a pretty high level of comfort at that time over a month ago. So clearly, if the board is not ready, we will not push forward with this. Because I don't want you to feel like you're backed against a wall. So give us direction and we'll follow suit.
Mr. Susan?
Just a couple of real quick questions, and then I'll follow up with the emails and stuff like that. But one of the things that I noticed is, is we have roughly $1 million in sunk costs that are being used for savings. And I wanted to verify this, that those one point, that $1 million that we have, that we've identified for savings because the clerk is going to be doing something else, or the secretary is going to be doing something else, the ones that Mr. Ziegler referred to that is inside there, those are already sunk costs, correct? Meaning that we are going to pay those hourly wages next year anyway?
Absolutely.
So the actual cost savings, we will be paying more next year, being the fact that we will be not reducing this cost, we will just be adding it to the original piece?
Yes. I mean, the secretaries are working eight hours a day, five days a week. The idea is, what are they putting their time in, energy to, and freeing up time to use elsewhere? The overall cost of paying the secretary will not change because of this program, but it would take them from having to spend as much time on one thing, reduce on another. They are in both sides of this equation, the savings and the cost of the new program.
So the argument can be made that once, if we were to execute this contract, would cost our district $1 million more in operational costs than the, or $700,000 if you reduce the $300,000 for next year. Is that correct?
I can't say whether that's correct or not without running numbers and looking at it.
We will have to make up for the $1 million in sunk costs somewhere. And that's going to have to come out of an operational budget next year, correct?
I'm not following you, sir. I'd rather, I'd need to look at it. I apologize.
I'm following you, Matt. And it's, they're going to get paid anyhow. It's not like we're going to reduce our expenses. They're getting paid anyhow.
So the argument is, is that in order, that we are not going to have a $300,000 savings, we're going to have a $700,000 cost if you take the $1 million.
Correct. That's my, was my point.
And that $700,000 will have to come out of operating and we'll have to find it. So it's ultimately bare bones, not a savings, is what I was looking at.
Correct. So you're just that out of there. You add in the medical and the Affordable Care Act that we are not paying right now. And that gives you a more accurate number of where we would be this year if this was implemented.
I didn't know about the DACA and everything else. I apologize.
That's why I wasn't clear on it all either. That's why I did some research.
So that's one point. The next question I had real quick was the insurance. Do you guys know what that insurance is? This is a hot-button issue. And the only reason I ask now before the workshop is the substitutes, some say, "I don't want it," some say they did. Do you know what the plan is, the insurance plan, the deductibles?
That Kelly has?
Yeah. Is that available?
No, I do not know what Kelly has for their insurance.
Is that in a tentative agreement that we have with them in this contract?
No. Our agreement with them would be strictly the hiring and use of their substitutes. The employment agreement that Kelly would have with whoever they hire for substitutes is between them, and we don't have any say in that.
So we don't know what that insurance plan is? We're just saying you'll get insurance?
Right.
Okay. And then I think just to verify, we have not given our substitutes a raise since, I think that wage said 2004, correct? Is that right?
2007, I think.
Change, yeah, changes in the minimum wage is what has been given.
But for degreed and graduates and all that stuff, the not the top, the top three tiers have not moved since 2004. I think the bottom one did in 2007. Is that correct?
Well, 2017, we actually just increased the minimum wage, so that just went up January 1st.
For the bottom tier, but we didn't touch the top-tier degree.
2007 was the last time. That's correct.
Okay. And we, and I think you stated it earlier, we don't have a recruiting piece to go out and get them, right? So one of the issues that we're having is, is that we're not able to go recruit more. So we're basically just whoever shows up and stuff like that. Have we done an analysis as comparative to the surrounding counties with the cost of their paid, the subs, what they get paid? Has that been done yet? Meaning that do our subs get paid less than Volusia and our surrounding counties?
That I have not done, no.
Okay, okay. All right. The rest of my questions, I can wait until we have the workshop. Thank you so much for answering them. I really appreciate it.
So what I'm hearing is that we would like to have a workshop. I don't want to muddy the water too much, but in our board reports and discussion points, I have listed the Board BFT workshop. And the only reason I bring it up is because it touches on the substitute issue as well. I don't want to take up their time in discussing the contract language, but I do believe that the piece that we are going to discuss during that will have some relevance to the overall picture. So I think what we're going to have to do is find us a time, Pam, in the next few weeks to do a, probably it won't be a full, you know, four-hour workshop. I can imagine an hour or two where we can get many of these pieces of information pushed to the board early so we can have that discussion. Because it sounds like there's just some really good questions that I think the board just really wants to have a better understanding as we move forward with finding that contract. Yes, sir?
How soon could I have all of the questions from the board that the board would like responses to? Because I didn't have that opportunity for tonight.
That's a great point. I would ask that the board get those questions to Dr. Kent. Can we say by, in the next 48 hours and by Thursday?
Well, I would like to get the documents, the actual contracts and stuff like that so that I can formulate my questions. So like, there's going to be a whole lot of like, I mean, if we don't?
Which contracts? You said multiple contracts?
Well, if we have Kelly Services contract, right? We haven't seen that. So is there a contract that we have on the table that we can look at? I'd like to have all the supporting documents. We don't have those. So I'm going to formulate questions just based on operations.
What other contracts?
Do we have a contract, a copy of the contract?
I don't have it for you tonight.
With Kelly Services? Is there a contract out there?
Yes, I can get you a copy.
That's all. That's all. So some stuff, some supporting documents like that.
So just that, you said contracts, though, multiple.
Well, no, I apologize, but there's other things.
I want to make sure we know exactly what it is.
I can take a look, but to put a deadline of 48 hours on something when we haven't seen a couple of those might be a little stretch.
Okay, let's have it in by the end of this weekend, then.
Okay.
Is that good? Everybody good? All right? So we will ask that if you could forward the board the tentative contract or the proposed contract language so that they can look at it and formulate some questions, we'll have those questions back to you.
No problem.
Thank you. And then Pam, we can look for a day in the next two to three weeks so we can squeeze one in. I think we might have one in there somewhere, anyway. All right. Are there any more discussion, anything else on the information agenda that anybody would like to discuss? Hearing none. We are now at Board Member Reports and Discussion Points. There are several items for discussion tonight. The first is regarding the superintendent's contract brought up by Mr. Ziegler. Please, Mr. Ziegler, if you can lead us.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Of course, we all know that this conversation is stirred up by, huh? This conversation for the contract language is initiated by the fact that it appears as if the superintendent was included as part of the non-bargaining administrators' raise we voted in in December. I don't believe that we voted in him in a raise, and I know, there was no question in my mind that he would be included in that set, nor had to be excluded by motion in that set. And having learned, been surprised by that announcement, I had questioned the language of the contract which was sent to the board so we could all look at the language in the contract. In speaking to Dr. Blackburn, he felt that the language supported it and that we should look at tightening up the language in the contract. And so I agree with him that we should address that and find out, make sure whether this did trigger that by verbiage, whether we need to correct that. And make sure that we don't have something like this unexpectedly happen again because the language might not be appropriate. However, in reading the language of the contract, I don't see how this was triggered. If you recall, I did ask our attorney, Mrs. Enville, that question, and she agreed with me that it's clear in the contract that the raise is only triggered by a positive evaluation. In the case of the new language of the contract, it says, "Subject to an average evaluation score of 3.5 or higher," that's set forth in paragraph 14, "shall be increased by the percentage of salary increase prior, provided to the other 12-month administrative employees of the board." I've consulted with some other attorneys also, and that the question, which Ms. Enville, you hadn't got back to me on yet, was the follow-up question, was how does some, this contract was implemented on July 1st. And we need to understand how this occurred in order for us to know whether we need to modify the language. And I'm not really clear on how this happened. But this contract was voted on in July 11th, 2017, to be effective on July 1st, 2017. Yet the superintendent's evaluation that you refer to as a positive evaluation that triggered this occurred prior to the modification of the language. How does an event, I'm not, I still don't understand how an event prior to the modification of language triggers that to happen, number one. And what do we do this May when we evaluate him and he gets positive valuation? We just don't give him a raise? This would technically, by the language, could then be interpreted, he gets one and a half percent again because of the vote that we had in December 12th. How do we circumvent that disaster in May if both of those scenarios are true? Now, if this language was valid prior to his last evaluation, I could understand the argument that that evaluation triggered on our vote in December. But because the evaluation was prior to the contract, I don't get it. I don't see that it is valid. I don't see that it should apply. And I don't understand how it occurred. And I'm curious, did staff come to you before applying that and ask you if this applied?
No, I didn't, I didn't do, I didn't talk to staff about this. I read it after your email. I was looking at the footnote.
So staff made the decision to do this then, without consulting the board or without consulting our attorney, to determine what was appropriate? I don't think it?
I think, I think if, if that's the way it was, I think it was the language found
in the footnote at the bottom there that says, "It is the intent of the board through this employment agreement based on the results of each annual evaluation of the superintendent to provide an annual salary increase." So with our administrators and our teachers, their raise is based on their evaluation from the previous year, right?
Correct.
So they're either rated they're effective or highly effective, but their raise then goes into effect for the next year, starting at the beginning of the fiscal year, for the previous year's evaluation. So I'm thinking that's probably what, and I, when we sat down and discussed this contract language, I wasn't privy to all of your conversations, but I remember we focused on this footnote language here. And I'm guessing this is probably what it was. So the, like, my, I have similar language in my contract, too, so we probably need to look at that. So because I didn't have an evaluation last year, I did not get the raise, because I would be considered one of your non-bargaining employees as well. But I don't have a valuation, but the superintendent does, and his evaluation was last year's evaluation. And I, in the footnote, when we had our discussions, I thought you meant for the, it was my recollection of our discussions, is that the 2015 was because he hadn't received a raise since 2015, and that moving forward is the intent of the board to go ahead and provide the raise based, annual salary increase based on his evaluation, which would be the previous year's evaluation.
But on his past evaluation, he got a raise. So this is like giving him two raises on one evaluation. I just, I don't see that was ever the intent of this board. I'm sure it wasn't the intent. And I don't see in the language that it applies. The other thing, while we're discussing that and considering the dilemma we have in the following evaluation that needs to be addressed now before we find ourselves in a pickle, is there's additional language in here that I think is an issue in that, "Each increase to the superintendent's salary shall become effective as of the date of the board's approval of the increase," which would be December 12th. And I believe what we were, because when we talked about retroactive after our last conversation, at least my understanding of retroactive was similar to the employees, where it goes back to the beginning of that year in which the raise was given, to July And I'm not clear as to whether it went back just one year, because somebody had brought up, they thought it went back two years, which I just don't think that's true. Goes back one year. So that language, I think, is incorrect, because I believe the intent was to go back to the beginning of the fiscal year, not just to the date of the vote, which is what's implied by this language. I think that's incorrect, based on our intent also.
Ms. Belford?
It seems to me that there is enough uncertainty around the language that we probably need to ask Ms. Enville to look through it and clear all of that up and bring us back recommendations for amending the contract. And are we all, are we all in agreement that there's some concern there?
I would agree. I agree. I think, though, that what I, we're not reinventing the wheel here.
Right.
Right? This is the way most superintendent contracts are written. So what I would ask you is, is that we solicit the legal opinions through your, through your connections to figure out how we make sure that we are, we're doing it the way the others are, with the right intent and that the language supports that.
I could do that.
If that makes sense.
The language could, you could have said effective, there could have been language added, you know, and we can go back and negotiate that later. We could have added language effective with the blank school year as well.
Correct. Correct. I agree with that. There's all kinds of stuff. I think what I would like to know, since we, A, I would like to know what are, because the previous two superintendents were on this exact same contract agreement, so we probably should look back at their language and then, again, solicit the other counties that have a similar situation and make sure that we're kind of following the same thought process. And that that legal.
And if you could, get additional opinion on whether this language, since you weren't consulted prior to it being implemented, if you can find out if this language does trigger on an event prior to the beginning of the contract, let's get clarification on that. And unfortunately, one other thing came up that was presented to me that I've never heard of before, that I don't know if applies, but apparently there's some state statute that speaks to retroactive that speaks to retroactive raises for services already provided not being permissible with the exception of labor bargaining. And I don't know if our non-bargaining administrators or in the case of our superintendent or our attorney, if that statute is applicable, and I can't speak to a number, it's just, it was suggested to me that they didn't think that was possible. Well, they know it's not, but in our world, they said it might be, so that was a bit of uncertainty.
All right. I'm not aware of one right now, but I will look and see.
Completely new to me, but trying to do my homework.
Ms. Susan?
That's what I've learned.
I mean, Andy's just setting direction. Go through it.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Enval, do you have enough to work on there?
I think so.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, I added a quick discussion on instructional coaches. I've already had a discussion with Dr. Blackburn about this, and I just want to bring it up for the board's knowledge, and it's probably something we need to look at going forward because I was not, I didn't quite understand, and I think you probably may have had some of our new instructional coaches reach out to you as well. If they move from the classroom to that literacy coach or to that coach position, they, they actually may take a pay decrease. And because of the labor category, they're not getting that supplement that resource teachers were getting for a while there, so there was some confusion about that. We don't need to have the whole discussion now because there's going to be a lot more that we need to talk about with Ms. Erker, but I just want to put it on your radar as something, as we move into the budget cycle, we need to look at that and make sure that it is something that we have, have some background information on as we, as we talk about that. Mr. Susan?
Will our survey that we paid to do trigger this a little bit?
I was just going to ask that same question.
Should, it should include.
It should, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. So we'll wait, has that come out yet? I thought it was supposed to be pretty soon. Okay.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
And yet another topic, sorry, another topic I added was the Board BFT Workshop. And again, just a quick reminder that at the end of February is our scheduled, I think it's the 24th, 24th, Dan, I believe?
27th.
27th, sorry, 27th, Tuesday the 27th, before our board meeting, is the Board, Annual Board BFT Workshop. The BFT has requested that we address the substitute issue and not what we're discussing from the substitute issue, but more of a best practices from, from school-based sites and how, and how the substitute situation is handled in some ways and maybe not handled the same way in a different place. Not to get too far into it, but I think, you know, as you know, as the board knows, the, there is a survey ongoing for our substitutes to get some input from that side. Mr. Bennett and I worked on, actually, he did most of the legwork, so I appreciate it, on some, some questions to do an administrative side survey. He's going to work with Dr. Mullins to get that pushed out so that we've got some data over the first couple of weeks of February to give us some discussion points during that time, but we'll have a further agenda here going forward, but I just want to make sure that you all had that on your radar as well, and that when you see that it's about substitutes, it's not about the contract, although I'm sure we can discuss some of that as well, but it's not specific to that contract. Next thing is, and I emailed you this, unfortunately, I think it might have just gone, but some of you may have already seen it, and certainly I know Ms. Belford is, knows about it, but Representative Placencia and Senator Mayfield have asked us, the Department of Public Schools, to support a bill that would return the authority and flexibility to school districts on how they set pay scales, including performance pay and extra pay for advanced degrees. It's House Bill 427, Senate Bill 1324, titled Instructional Personnel and School Administrator Salary Schedules, and it, it basically is, does what I, what I just outlined. Kind of wanted to get the thoughts of my fellow board members and see if that's something that we, as a board, would like to actively promote, and then maybe get some ideas on how we might want to do that. Mr. Susan?
So I, I like the bill. Penny said that it was good on her part. She doesn't see any red flags. She's seen it in the past. I think that it behooves us to know that a master's degree that's not in your subject is still a master's degree, and you still have processes and procedures that you've learned during a master's degree that actually carry forward regardless of what subject you have. And if we're going to ask our district and our people who change, one year they might be social studies, the next year they might be English, and they get switched a lot, and you're asked to carry different certifications so that they can pull you, I think it behooves us to do that because if somebody's going to put themselves in front of it and do it, I like the bill. Now, with that said, I think that there's some other people, maybe Ms. Duskovich and stuff like that, that would like a minute to think about it, and if that's the case, then I forward that to her, so.
Ms. Duskovich?
The summary is fantastic. It sounds like local control right up my alley. I want to support it, but I want to read the bill before I put my stamp, I mean, it's on my phone and I'm trying to
No worries.
I just need a little bit more time.
Anywheres?
Does a little more time mean
Ms. Belford?
Wait a minute now? Or would you like to carry it forward to another time?
I'll be happy to speak to it. As, as I think you all know, during session, the Legislative Committee, which I'm our Brevard representative on the FSBA Legislative Committee, we are meeting weekly. We meet every week for, it's supposed to be for an hour. Last time it was about an hour and a half because there was a whole lot that was going on in Tallahassee. And so we, we do an online meeting once a week just for updates on the bills that are coming through and what things look like going along. And so I did put some information out about this bill. I think that it is beneficial to teachers, certainly beneficial to the district. It is my hope that we can do some creative things with our pay scales after we get our compensation study back and, and we can get innovative to do great things for teachers. And I think this bill certainly gives us more flexibility to be able to do that. I also think that there is probably an impact on accountability in that, quite frankly, some of our assessments are there to allow us to grade teachers. And so removing that pay-for-performance piece removes the requirement for some of those assessments, so I think in that respect, it's good for kids. Certainly, Ms. Duskovich respects your request to have more time to read through it before we give it a thumbs up, but just wanted to give you some of the, the background discussion that we've been having on it, and if you, if you have questions, feel free to reach out. If you guys are interested in me sending my updates from every one of our legislative meetings each week, I'd be happy to share that information with you. I don't want to overload you, but at the same time, things are moving pretty fast. As of last week, we had over 220 bills on our bill tracker that we're trying to, to monitor as things move through, in addition to the things that are going on with the Constitution Revision Commission. As you all know, they met last Friday, voted down our, our removal of salary, but they're meeting again this Friday with three other Education Committee bills that have the potential to impact us. So there's a lot going on. If you want me to overload you with all of that information, I'll be happy to do it.
Only if it's a forward. All you have to do is forward it, because I see the copious notes you take, and I don't want to stress you out to do anything more. So if it's just a forward, please, but if it's more of your work, then don't sweat it. We can do the FSBA updates.
Got it.
Ms. Ziegler, anything on that?
On, on that, I don't have any.
Okay. So I, I think going forward, it sounds like, and I totally respect Ms. Duskovich's desire to take a look at it even a little closer, realizing we don't have another meeting until we go to Tallahassee, so that's okay. It's nothing that we were going to vote on, but it's certainly something that we can ask Mr. Reed to probably start the wheels in motion to figure out maybe the best strategy utilizing Capital City on how we can best support it, whether that's through a proclamation that we can vote on later, but still bring with us to Tallahassee, whether that's something we can add to our legislative platform as we get into our meetings with our legislators and other legislators while we're up there. And if anybody else has any other ideas. Yes, Mr. Susan?
I would, being the fact that we ran into this problem with the CPR bill at the Central Florida Coalition, they said, "Well, we like it all, but we have a couple more questions, and the bill's dead right now," because they would like to voice. So what I would like to do, and Ms. Duskovich, if it's up to you, I would like to say, going forward, if Ms. Duskovich was to get with Dr. Blackburn and give her seal of approval within the next couple of days, at that point, we could trigger a proclamation that would allow it to go immediately prior to us going up to Tallahassee so we can use that as part of our evaluation platform when we go up there with the kids. I thought that would be a better plan overall, if she's willing to move that. If there's a couple of days that you need, if great, if not, I'm willing to wait as long as you need.
Yeah, I think that was kind of what I was saying, is we get, kind of get those wheels in motion, we get, get things ready, so if, if we do have a consensus and everybody's on board, when we show up to Tallahassee, we have that absolutely.
Okay.
And even maybe beforehand, we can start shooting out
Perfect.
Some prior information.
Thank you.
Again, nothing we have to vote on even before, we can still
Or ask them.
Move forward on.
Good.
All right. I think that is the last thing on the actual agenda. Are there any other board member reports, starting with now, Mr. Ziegler?
Yes, and I was going to speak on the Constitutional Revision Commission item that Mrs. Belford just referred to where the, the salary item got defeated. I did communicate with
For a second time.
Yeah, I did communicate with all of the CRC members via email, and I got responses from half of them, not, not automated either. So they did read the, what I had to say, and I did it because I've been, you know, being in my, my 10th year, I spoke to the salary and I spoke to the limits as to my experiences and to the importance of board members and having quality board members and how that can be detrimental to having quality people run. And I don't know if that helped or not, or what happened. All I know is I'm glad that it got defeated.
Ms. Belford? They're tricky, and they stay on.
And they don't, they don't react when I, like, I have to be patient, and I'm not so good at
They keep looking down, and everybody's live.
Because I've pushed it so many times, it's broken down.
Cool. Just a couple of other legislative things that I would like to, to mention that you all may want to take a look at. So the, the salary bill or the salary proposal was voted down in the CRC last week, but they do still have the term limit proposal, which is coming up this Friday in the Education Committee. In addition to the term limit proposal in the CRC, the CRC proposal would include two years prior, so any service since 2016 would be included in that term limit. But there is also a joint resolution in the legislature that would include four previous years on term limit. So that's, that's kind of moving on both sides, both CRC and Legislative, just, just for a heads up on that. Also, there was, I think we all got an email today on the transportation bill, which is a double-edged sword because, quite frankly, it's good for kids. It addresses some of the hazardous roadways where, for example, we have young kids that are walking in areas that are maybe not particularly safe for them, and, and moves the radius to 1.5 as opposed to 2. The downside of it is, at this point, there's no funding allocated for that change in the, the radius or the safe, safe walking paths. And so I guess the message there is, heck yeah, let's do it, but give us the money to do it, and if you're not going to give us the money to do it, then, then don't force that on us because it's going to be incredibly detrimental to our district. So I think important for the public to know that as well. Another bill that's moving through is retirement, and several years ago, they took COLA away from, from retirement in FRS, and now they are talking about putting a 2% COLA back into retirement. Another double-edged sword, good for our employees when they, when they are moving to retirement, certainly an increased cost to the district. So once again, need to, need to weigh those and, and just understand that everything costs money, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, great points, Ms. Belford, and I wonder if the transportation bill, if there's some way for us to dovetail that into what we have Brevard is trying to push for the last couple of years and getting, finally getting some traction in the, in the kind of overhaul of the state transportation funding lines. If we can, you know, maybe make that part of our talking points when we hit the legislature and, and kind of explain how the two go hand in hand. Again, you're exactly right. It's great for kids, it's great for, for, for access, but if there's no money on it and if, if the funding isn't following the child for their transportation then, fully, then we are, we're in a hard spot with that, especially if you saw Mr. Creach's projections.
If I may touch on that so that, as board members go on, they could speak to this too, since this is our last chance to really talk before we go up to Tallahassee. On the transportation bill, 100 buses is apparently what we were told we would need, which is about $11 million. We would need those whether they did just elementary or elementary, middle, and, and you know, but high school, we, we know that most of those high school buses are empty most of the time, and high school students are of an age where I'm not sure that 1.5 miles is terribly any different than 2 miles, you know, for, for those kids. Middle school might even be debatable, but I've always felt that elementary, that even a mile for an elementary school kid
Yeah.
Especially the young ones is just, is just, although I guess we, I did it when I was a kid, but I would be more apt to say, "Hey, that's a great idea for elementary," but maybe not for high school. However, the only savings we have to realize is going to be the labor of the routes because we still need the same number of buses. But just food for thought is that elementary is really where I'd like to do more to protect the kids, and I don't know if there's a way to change the parameters of that bill, if we can, we up there, we can speak to them about that, give them some thought on it, but we really need to enlighten them on the costs that we just, we don't have. And remember, when any of them say, "Well, you've got a half-cent sales tax for capital," it does not apply to vehicles.
Mr. Reed, maybe you can get us some, some idea from Capital City, what, where this bill kind of, where the traction lays and, and you know, if that's something that, you know, if we go in with a couple of different options of, "Hey, you know, here's how much it's going to cost."
Yeah.
If you're really committed to it, perhaps we can look at, you know, modifying it a little bit or something like that. Maybe we can just get an idea of where, where it sits and some of those key players, I think that might help.
Good idea.
Any other board reports? I'm sorry, Ms. Belford, you, you all done there? Anyone this way? Dr. Blackburn? I do have one thing, only because I did not pull the item, and the only reason I would have pulled it was to discuss it real quickly. Sat with DJ Cornell for a good, long time this week concerning the Head Start program, and I just want to make sure, we voted tonight on the Head Start reports from October and November. As you probably know, part of your duties now are, you are the, the Oversight Board for Head Start and for that program, and all 14 sites that encompasses 13 schools in the South Area Head Start Program. And so as I talked to her and we tried to figure out maybe the governance piece a little bit better, we had lots of ideas kind of thrown around, and I'd like to make sure that as we move, like, next week, we have an audit, it's a phone audit, but it's most of the week, myself and Ms. Belford are going to be involved in it. But please do not hesitate to reach out, and I've asked Ms., or I've asked DJ to, to start including us on some of those emails, not to overwhelm us, but to give you an idea where the Head Start program is
Yeah.
And what they're doing, so that you can include it in some of your, your visits and some of your questions when you go to those schools that have them, talking to the principals about how it's working in their, in their, in their building. Oftentimes, you know, they're, they're separated, sometimes they're a little bit more integrated, but the key is, is, as we talked, is, is that I think we really need to concentrate on, and, and she agrees, and it's something that they're really are looking at hard, is making sure that continuity from that program into the kindergarten is there and that those teachers are visiting each other and are, are talking constantly to make sure that there is the continuity for each child as they move through that program and into the actual kindergarten arena. So I applaud the work that, that she is doing and that their entire team is doing, and Jane, thank you, please pass that to her. I know it's a lot of extra on her plate, and she does a great job with it, but, and so does the entire team. But if we can, as a governing board, when you see those things come up, don't be afraid to take a look at them and ask the questions you would, just as you would as a, as a board looking at the district itself. Yes, it's separate, but it's a piece inside of us, and it's a critical piece, so if you could do that. And that's about all I have. Make sure that I don't miss anything. Dr. Blackburn, you sure you don't have anything?
Pause.
Other than the fact that tomorrow is Dr. Blackburn's birthday?
Oh, we should sing "Happy Birthday" right now.
You can sing it to him later, Mr. Susan.
Happy birthday.
There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.